Well, April 5th, 2022, regular meeting of the Eugene One Electric Board to order. The first agenda item is, uh, agenda check. Anything that anybody wants to discuss about moving the agenda around or alterations? I have a board member and a general manager. I was going to start with the general manager.
Well, thank you. I don't have anything this evening.
All right. Matt?
Nothing from either.
Mindy?
Nothing.
Okay, Sonia? John B?
Nothing, thank you.
Good to go. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is public input. Anybody signed up to either in person or on phone for public input this evening?
We don't have anyone who signed up to use the input telephone, and we're running a little bit ahead of schedule for in-person, so maybe we can circle back.
Okay, and then, so I'm going to, at 6:35, I'll look to the audience and see if anybody's sitting here in attendance, and if they are, and we'll deviate from schedule and let them testify. Is that correct? Sound good? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next is consent calendar. Approval of consent calendar A. I think you've all had a chance to read it. Is there, if not, is there a motion to approve the adoption of consent calendar A?
Second.
Move by McCray, second by Carlson. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Consent calendar B.
I'd like to pull.
Okay, does Carlson would like to pull items?
Uh, number five, number eight, number 10.
Five, eight, 10 on consent calendar B has been pulled. Anything else? Does anybody like to pull?
Take a look at nine.
And McCray is pulling nine. Okay, absent. Five, eight, nine, and 10 is your motion to adopt consent calendar B.
Move to approve consent.
Move by Carlson, second by McCray. All those in favor who adopt consent calendar B minus the final four items signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Commissioner Carlson, you want to start with number five?
Please. So I polled, uh, number five and number eight primarily due to the size. $5 million for Anixter and Pacific excavation. I just think that something of that significant shouldn't just be a quick, uh, you know, vote on here. I would like to have staff come and talk to us a little bit about it on each of those. Get a little bit more conversation going. And I would like to later talk about having a motion around consent calendar items, removing those from consent calendar and actually having the agenda items moved forward.
Okay, I'd like the general manager's feedback on the effects of pulling those if we delay on things such as that, so could you give us some feedback on that, Frank?
Well, I would, um, with respect to the items you hold, I would just assume refer to staff. Karen Kelly and/or appropriate staff to talk about the specific items.
Okay, uh, number, number five is the, uh, electrical products of $5 million over five years. Karen Kelly.
Good evening, commissioners. Karen Kelly, chief operations officer for the record. Consent calendar number five for Anixter is a standard stock of parts for electrical. We did use a cooperative contract for that to try and get, uh, a pretty robust process through other means to save us time and get, um, other contracts flowing, uh, from another source. So I think I will have Quentin come online and discuss that process, the cooperative contract process.
Sure, thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Karen. So, uh, yes, as Karen mentioned there, that is a, what we call an interstate cooperative agreement, and it was established through an entity, um, that awards, that advertises basically for multiple agencies across the United States in the effort to get like a, a larger contract put in place that will offer substantial savings to its participating members, which EWEB is one of. And that, that's, that's basically it. So there's a, a large contract that's available to us to use. It's through our ORS, it's allowable to use those cooperative procurements.
Okay. I want to make sure that, if I may, just to understand Commissioner Carlson's concern. I think she had kind of indicated that she would like to make these actually an agenda item when anything gets over $5 million. And so, uh, is this explanation enough for you to move this forward at this particular point?
I did have another follow-up question, but I just wanted to get kind of a conversation around. You, you said that there was, it was competitive, and I just wanted to find out a little bit more about what the non-responsive piece meant and how that arrived.
Okay, so on item number five, that one, there, there was nothing about a non-responsive bidder on that one. Was there another item here?
I didn't search, and it came up there. Oh. When I search for that, it's.
You were talking about consent calendar A, item number two.
Got it, yeah.
It was also Anixter, but for a specific potential transformer.
Got it. Okay. No, I'm fine on this. I just, it just feels like with ones that have such a big dollar value that we should get a little bit more conversation with staff and maybe a little bit of rapport on it. And maybe others don't feel that way. I just wanted to raise it as a conversation starter. So, um, I'm fine with moving forward with number five. I would like to have the same kind of conversation with Pacific excavation when we get to number eight, but I'm fine with number five as well.
Let's, um, do one at a time, so if anybody wants to move to adopt consent calendar B, item five, so moved, please. So, so moved. Moved by Borowski. Second by McCray. All those in favor signify by aye by raising your hand.
Aye.
Unanimously. Okay, consent calendar B, number eight, Pacific excavation, also Karen Kelly. Sonia, would you like to?
Yeah, so this one, it's, uh, $19 million for the two storage tanks. Wanted to talk a little bit about the process and, you know, how we arrived at this particular group.
Okay.
Yeah, I again will ask Quentin to, to chime in, but this, this was a standard request for proposals, and we, we have worked with Pacific excavation. We did get, uh, a number of responsive bids, and, um, you know, uh, we have worked with this contractor in the past, we've had a good rapport with them. So Quentin, do you want to discuss the process?
Sure, yeah. As Karen mentioned, this was a standard invitation to bid process for a construction contract, and it was bid competitively, and we did receive a number of responses. And the ranking was that Pacific excavation was the highest ranked, lowest responsive responsible bidder. So I, I think that the question is more around the, the amount of the contract, is that correct?
Yeah, I just, you know, this is, and this is a test too, so maybe it doesn't make sense, but I wanted to just have the quick conversation with these two items since they're so large, you know, to make sure that we are giving them the due diligence that they deserve. And I, and I do well recognize that the documentation in the packets has increased significantly over the last number of years, but it, it seems like, you know, with, with such a big dollar value that I just want to make sure that we're giving it due diligence. And, you know, it doesn't seem like too much more is coming out of the conversation, but, um, I wanted to see a little bit more about, about what would come from it because it's just such a big dollar value, and it seems like it's not doing it justice to just have it as consent calendar item that we just vote on and move on, but maybe that's.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when I asked for, uh, number nine, this Pacific excavation was the one that I was, um, looking to ask questions about, so I, I, anyway, my agenda says this is number nine. Whatever. I do have a few questions on this particular one. And actually, I would like to reiterate Sonia's point that, uh, the background materials you all provide us on these contracts is super helpful. You answer most of the questions thoroughly, and, um, it's, it's, they're consistently well done, so thank you to staff on that front. This one, um, I had a question just because looking at the contracts that we've had over the last couple of years with Pacific excavation, um, there are, all of them have gone over budget, which I think with projects of this complexity and given the current economic condition we're in, perhaps that's not uncommon, but I'd love to hear staff's thought about that. Are we seeing this consistently where excavation projects and large projects like this are just consistently over the budget that we're expecting? Are there any tools at our disposal to hedge against that kind of cost overrun? And is our budget prepared to continue to deal with this, um, with all the projects that we have going forward? I, I don't know how long this kind of economic situation is going to continue, but it's certainly a little unsettling for me. Anyway, sorry, a bunch of questions there.
Yeah. So let me jump in, I'll try to answer just a couple of them, and if I miss someone, some of them, anyone else can jump in here, either Karen or Fualley's here, he can maybe jump in a little bit there too. So, um, do we have tools in place to kind of watch for this? Yes, we do, you know, have provisions within our contract that limit what the increases can be, and there's like a process for allowing those increases. And we do work with the contractors if there is going to be an amendment or a change order, in this case for a construction project. As far as Pacific excavation, I know that they have gone over. If you're looking at the table that was provided there, that a lot of the project had gone over. A lot of the time that, that's not painting the entire picture. It's not necessarily that they were reckless in their construction, and all of a sudden they've just increased dramatically in scope. It's, a lot of time that may be at staff direction. There may be additional work that's identified that needs to be done now that the ground is open. There's things that are exposed or can be concealed damages or concealed conditions. I think one of the examples that we have here is Willig LSP, the Water Main project, and we took that opportunity to add the Onyx Street work to that. And in so doing, it may have increased the project total, but it saved a lot of money because we didn't have to do another process and then mobilize another contractor to bring them out. So we save some time and money and effort by doing that, so, um...
Are we seeing cost overruns like that in, uh, from other contractors as well in this type of work?
In construction, in constra-, I will just say this, as all of you are aware, we're in like very difficult times across the whole world right now. So, construction in general, I don't think we're seeing as many. I don't think you see it as, as much in, in construction as you would if this was like a goods contract. If you're buying just like a specific item, items are costing a lot more than they were. So the, the, the cost of raw materials is really apparent when you're buying just goods. Obviously, they're using goods for this, so the prices are escalating in those types of contracts as well, but I don't think it's translating to like massive cost overruns for construction. No, it, it definitely has gone up, but nothing significantly like dramatic as opposed to like what we're trying to do with the warehouse by maintaining our existing pricing.
All right, great, thanks, Quentin. Sonia?
I'm curious on the, on the topic of that, if it would be possible to put another little column at the end there where it has prior contact, contract activities, that has like coding, you know, EWEB-directed, that's why we have the cost overruns. It was an opportunity, you know, or, or something like that, so it gives us a little bit of a sense of, well, this was EWEB-driven versus this was, you know, supply chain. Just, and if that's too much, you know, from a staff perspective, it just, it, it would be helpful to know, is this something that's on the contractor that would give us a red flag versus something that makes complete sense? Because this does take a little bit of a picture there of, you know, constant overruns. Some of it's explainable, and, you know, maybe others are not. Maybe it wa-, it was a poorly managed project, I'm not saying that this one was, but, and, and they just kept coming back because they weren't doing this and that and the other thing, and that would indicate to us later, it's, you know.
Sure.
For someone on the board who sees these once a month, I'm not in the, you know, mix of all these contracts all the time, and we're trying to make sure that we make good decisions on behalf of EWEB payers, and sometimes it's hard to know if, I mean, I, I do trust the EWEB staff to go through a thorough process, but we also have to do our own verification, but we still have to get that information from staff in order to make that determination.
Yeah, yeah, and what you're saying makes total sense, I understand what you're saying. So we will take a look at this. Obviously, we're always trying to improve these consent items. It seems like every, every month we're making one other small, little change to, to improve them. So I will work with staff and see if there's something that we could do that maybe elaborate a little bit more on that. I'm not sure exactly how we could do it. They've already, they've gotten fairly large at this point, but what you're saying makes a lot of sense. Yes, you need to understand the whole picture.
Well, you know, it just preserves the history of it too, so when we look, you know, in the future, what happened. Anyway, okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the conversation here.
Sonia, do you have what you need?
I do, and I'm willing to make a motion to approve, and can I, can I approve eight and nine? If you're drawing it, I'm more than happy to do that. Okay, move to approve eight and nine.
Move by Carlson, second by McCray. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Consent calendar B, agenda items, number eight, nine have been through. Now, resolution, or, excuse me, uh, number 10, resolutions 2209, 2210, and 2211.
Right, uh, so this is on the Lieber Canal properties. I would like to, I would like to have a quick conversation about them. I'm not particularly happy with the process that went through, and I want to see how others feel about it and potentially recommend that we don't approve some portion of them or maybe one of them. I, my, uh, my leaning would be to not approve the last one that didn't have a marketable, wasn't actually fully marketed, it seems like maybe it was just jumped in there, but.
2211, that's.
2211, yes, tentative resolution number 2211.
Other people want to chime in on John B?
Yeah, just to give context to some of the people who may be watching, uh, these are a couple of properties along the Lieber Canal that will, uh, help us in remedying some of the issues that we're having with seepages and, and ongoing problems we're going to have going forward. Two of the properties we've entered into an agreement with, and I believe that that was our appropriate. The third one, we have some questions about and whether or not we're ready to move forward with it. So for me, I think I would move forward with resolution number 2209 and 2210 subsequently, and put a hold on resolution 2211 for further action at another meeting.
Another discussion? Mindy, I want to hear from you, if you have an opinion on this?
Um, I am in agreement with Commissioner Borowski, and then also I would just recommend that going forward, um, there's a new policy on how to make these decisions and that the board is informed or at least, um, privy to what that, what that will look like in the future. So we have a little bit of, um, knowledge about how these decisions are made.
Sonia, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see appraisals done before some of this goes into the future. I just want to put that on, on record, and I want to make sure that our rates are more high. I'd like to see appraisals if that's part of the process.
General manager Lawson?
Yeah, I would, um, support, um, request of the board to evaluate the, the processes that we use for the, the acquisition or divestiture of real estate, real property. And I can work with staff, um, as a follow-up to this meeting on that request.
Thank you. Matt, do you have anything you want to say about this? All right, John, you want to make a motion about, uh, moving forward 2209 and 2210?
Do you want them separately, or can we combine them?
Well, it's all one resolution, it's all one, so I would just move each resolution, move, move to adopt resolution 2209.
I move to adopt resolution 2209.
Is there a second?
Oh, okay.
Is there a second for 2209?
Second.
Second by Carlson, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye. And then now I move to approve resolution 2210, property acquisitions on Lieber Canal.
Second.
Second by Carlson, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Resolution 2211.
Would it be appropriate to table that resolution to a certain, or what would be the process that staff would?
Effectively tabling it at this point, um, does not approve it. So either way, the board is satisfied. Now, what I would do, Commissioner Borowski, is I would put a motion forth to pass, uh, 2211, and if the board should decide that they don't want to, that's the board's decision. We can, uh, bring back that property under a different process, or it in essence tables it for later.
With that, I will.
That way it makes it definitive, just.
Yeah, for the process of discussion, I will move to approve resolution 2211.
Is there a second?
Second for the purpose of moving it to a vote.
Discussion. If not, I'll call a vote. All those in favor for moving forward resolution 2211, say aye and raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously, resolution 2211 does not pass, thank you. That's enough for the consent calendar, thank you very much. We move on. Next agenda item is prior year audit and financial statements. Deborah Hart, Julie Desamoney. I didn't butcher your last name, Julia.
You're great, great, Desamoney, it's perfect. Thank you for having me virtually tonight, and I appreciate, uh, the time with the board. I will, uh, am able to answer any questions that you might have during the course of this presentation, as well as, uh, if you do want to stop me, or at the end, I'll have time for questions as well. So I am here tonight to present the 2021 audit results for EWEB. Next slide, please. There we go. What I want to talk to you real quickly about tonight is the engagement team, what we did in our nature of our services that we provided to EWEB this year, some of our significant audit areas, uh, what our audit opinions and reports look like, and some required communications that we need to have with you exposed charge with governance. Next slide, please. So these, uh, these pictures, I've, I've tried for years to get them to take pictures out of these slide decks, but they seem to like them a lot. But this is your primary field team. One thing I did want to point out on this is, uh, two things. In fact, I don't know how that got, I'm glad Keith is not here tonight, um, but Keith Kusimovik is now a partner with our firm. He just made it on January 1st, and I completely missed that. I, I actually did that slide deck, so that is my fault. But one thing I wanted to point out was Lori Titian's role. So our concurring reviewer role is a really important one within our firm and within our profession. Lori is, uh, responsible for reviewing all of our planning. She reviews our audit areas, our significant, uh, audit areas, and then she also comes at the end and makes sure that we engage as we plan to engage. She will look at the entirety of the financial statements and every opinion that we put out, and we cannot clear the audit without Lori's approval. So I think it's a very important peer, um, and we did change Lori out. Lori has only been on the audit a couple of years, so just wanted to note that as well. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read everything on this slide, I promise, but one of the things that we want to talk to you about is, is what we did provide. So as we have in the past, uh, we were able to report on the, um, on the audit of the financial statements. We also, uh, completed what's called the governmental auditing standards report. The reason that we had that this year was because you did trigger into the uniform grant guidance audit because your FEMA funds that were received from your last storm. So that audit was completed as well. Um, and you'll see that in number five, I'm kind of skipping down instead of cross. Number five is the, the audit of compliance over your, the uniform grant guidance for those FEMA funds. We also help a little bit with the, uh, review of the financial statements. However, management does, uh, and your accounting department does produce the entire draft of those financial statements, so it is produced by them. Because you are a municipal entity within the state of Oregon, you are required to follow the Oregon municipal, uh, standards. So that is a, a report and draft in the very back of your financial statements, which is approximately 13 compliance requirements that we have to look at over and above, both our, our, uh, general auditing and our governmental auditing. And then tonight, we're reporting out to you those charged with governance. Next slide, please. So I want to point out this slide, that these are just a few of our significant audit areas. These are all very, very important, but I don't want you to think that these are the only areas that, that we put the significance into, into. But when we look through the audit and we look through risk and where EWEB is at, um, these are some areas that we consistently want to take a look at. So work orders for sure, um, your plant process is massive, uh, and you have a lot of control systems that are moving in and out of that plant process. So making sure that we understand where all the funds are going through to how they're being classified and reported on the general ledger is incredibly important. Increasingly, as a part of these audits, your IT, oh, sorry, your IT security and access, incredibly important. So, so looking not only at the paper documents that you have, but what's happening within your IT system? How do people manage and get around those IT systems? Continues to take up even a more significant portion of our audit. In fact, we bring out an IT-only team, uh, that knows that EWEB's systems, that comes out and completes that audit along with the financial team as well. We just talked about the single audit, uh, we go back and forth, the single audit and uniform grant and guidance audit are synonymous, just FYI. It used to be called the single audit, uh, but that moved over a couple of years ago. We also want to make sure, you know, with all the moving pieces of COVID and even the supply chain disruptions, we just want to make sure that, that there's a consistent application of internal controls throughout the entire year, because these internal controls are incredibly important within the, the utility. And then finally, we need to look at if there's any concerns over any compliance with federal laws and regulations and Oregon minimum standards. Next slide, please. So I'm pleased to report to you tonight, um, that we did provide an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. If you happen to have had a chance to read the, um, the monumental document, the massive document that is your financial statement, you will notice if you try to compare the audit opinion to last year, uh, it was considerably different. So the AICPA made some significant changes to the form and makeup of the audit opinion. It didn't change how we audit, it just changes how that communication comes out in the form of the audit opinion. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer any of those. I'm also pleased to report that we had no findings or non-compliance with any laws or regulations in our government auditing standards report, no findings with the Oregon minimum standards report, and we spent quite a bit of time on, on that compliance finding, and then your uniform grant guidance, uh, the FEMA, no question costs and no compliance findings without that, within that FEMA program. Next slide, please. So some other required communications that we need to make, and again, this is also in the letter charged those with governance, um, if you want to read in further detail. But a couple of things is just what our, our responsibility. Our responsibility is, is under auditing standards is to complete the audit. It's management's responsibility to make any decisions upon the, the business. And so it's a very separate, um, what we're required to do versus what's management's obligation. In note to your financial statements, you'll find these significant accounting policies. These are really important because they set the rules and the construct to your financial statement. If one of those significantly changes, the numbers will significantly change. And so it's important to note if there's any changes. We've been in a period of the last couple of years due to COVID where GAZI, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, has pushed off some of the bigger standards that we were supposed to implement, uh, because they didn't want any governments or anybody really worrying about those type of standards. They wanted everybody sat down and, and dealing with, with the COVID around us. Unfortunately, uh, that is, that is ending. So we have some big ones coming up in the next couple of years, but for this year, uh, your accounting policies did not change or comparable. You've got apples to apples in prior, from the prior year. We do know that you do have management judgment and accounting estimates within your financial statements. One of your largest ones is, for example, your, um, your GAZI 68 or your pension liability. That liability is an estimate made on an estimate made on 17 other estimates and 20 other estimates before that. But what we look at is we want to see whether or not management has any bias introduced within the estimate-making, and whether the estimates make sense in the industry and are consistently followed. We believe that, that they are absolutely in line with, with industry standards, uh, and we saw no evidence of bias during the course of our audit. Pleased to also report that we found no audit adjustments or past audit adjustments as a result of the audit. This really gets to just the level of do-care that your accounting team and management really look at the audit. We have a lot of clients that tend to use the audit as a crutch. So we come in, um, I actually just had a conversation with one this morning that we found about 25 adjustments, uh, during the course of the audit. That's because things weren't closed, things weren't completely done. That is not what happens at EWEB. Management and the accounting department does an incredible job of reviewing through everything and giving us completed information for which we start our audit process on. We need to let you know if we know of any management consultation with other accountants, that gets back to the old days of, of opinion shopping, we know of none of that. We have no disagreements with management, uh, no difficulties in performing the audit. We and your accounting team spend a lot of time in the planning stage to make sure that we can get through this, um, this audit in a very timely fashion. And in fact, it's one of our quicker turnarounds. We leave it, two weeks later, we're issued, and that takes a great deal of, uh, one, integrity, two, planning, and just a great deal of, of working together and communication for both the audit team and. audit team and accounting and management. So we really appreciate the, how important that we know the audit process is to your teams. Next slide, please. So again, this is the end of the presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, but a huge thank you for everybody, because we will say that you're one of the first utilities in the state of Oregon that does get their financials out the door. We appreciate the hard work that gets into that. You can see the document, if you had a chance to look at it, it is an intense document, and it's only getting more intense with time, and we just really appreciate all the level of care and the level of communication and just working with us to allow us to get the audit completed in a timely fashion. So I'm around for any questions, should you have them.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Julie. I really appreciate that presentation. Do staff have anything else they want to say, or you want to hear from us?
Well, I do want to hear from you, but I just want to make sure that before we close this out, and good to see faces in person again, that I also thank the E-Web larger population of staff, because it was hard work across the organization that brought us these results.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open a queue if anybody has questions or comments. I know John B. loves his stuff. He eats up budgets and things, and so.
I do have a couple of comments. So first off, question to Julie, if I'm going through a 144-page report that you provided to us, as a policymaker and a governance person, what section should I be picking out of this as the most important thing to read?
Oh, you know, I really wish that you were, a year ago, I had that question from you, and I could have put you in line with GAZI, because they're asking that same question, or they were about a year ago. So that's a great, so if I were to take a look at it from a policy perspective, I would first look at, one, the audit opinion, because you want to know that that's unmodified, because if it's modified anyway, what's going on? Two, I would, oh, can you hear me? Oh, there we go. Okay, good, sorry, it went silent in my ear, scare me. Two, I would actually, and I wouldn't say this for every government, but your management discussion analysis is done very well. So I think that that management discussion will give you a broader sense of what's going on with the, with E-Web. So that would be the second thing I read. And then I'd go all the way to the back and look at your commitments and contingencies note. That's the most risk that you have in the organization. It's unfortunate that's the very last note, it's required by GAZI that we put it all the way in the back, but I never read financial statements if I'm reading through them, I never read them from beginning to end, because they're not in the level of risk. So again, I start with that audit opinion, go to that MDNA, if you have a good, solid management, governments are pretty all over the board on their, how well they do their management discussion analysis, and then go to your commitments and commit contingencies.
Great. So a couple of other things that jumped out at me. One, I was really pleased with the pension, the way the pensions performed over the last two years, and the fact that we're not having to make a contribution this year, that was eye-opening, because that usually isn't the case with public employee pension contributions. And then the second thing is, and Deborah, you may have to remind me, this may have been a different audit, but it seemed to me that last year, there were things that were brought up that were items of concern, like not closing, having things that weren't closed in a timely manner. Is this the same audit that would have showed that, and were those all taken care of?
It's the same audit that would have shown that, and this year they found no work order closeout issues, and that was in part what, in large part what I'm thanking the staff for the utility for working so hard on. So yes, this is where, this is where those showed up last year, and it's where you would look for those.
Okay, well, that's great. Congratulations to staff on that, because that's what I was looking through, is like, everything said, yeah, complied, 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 and then I recalled in an audit last year that said, well, complied, complied, you need to work on this. So congratulations on being able to work on that and getting that resolved. So thank you for the presentation.
Other questions or comments?
Matt? I would just say thanks to the audit team for doing the work and providing us the confidence that our team is doing the work accurately, and then thanks to our team for giving us the confidence by doing this work so thoroughly and carefully and accurately, so much appreciation all around.
Thank you.
Sonny?
Make it look easy, I know it's not. I'm gonna thank, so.
Manny, any questions or comments?
None from me, thank you.
I have a quick question, if I may, maybe for Julie or whomever, but when we instituted WAN, and we had some problems with that, it came up in the audit, and I didn't see anything in there at this time, does that mean we've got it working? The inventory system, and when we did that, is that all okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you very much. That's, I mean, it's wonderful to see that we don't see anything. And so I guess no news is the best news.
That's what we like.
Yeah, all right. Well, I know that we want some glitches coming in with that new program, we spent a lot of money on it, and I'm glad to see it's working, and it's working as envisioned and planned. So thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I just, I just want to know, Deborah thanked staff at large. I wanted to specifically thank, because it has come up in past management recommendation letters, the importance, and I think Julie touched on it, is the importance of the IS team and how we use our computer systems and how we institute controls within that system. That has come up for a number of years, and you'll notice, again, it was not on the management letter this time. And so as we enter into upgrades and modernization of our systems, that's the basis of which we're starting from now. So really pleased with the IS group.
And our partners around the utility have been open, and they've been asking how they can improve on these comments. Frank's point, very much appreciated, our IS partners, as well as all the folks who worked on the work order without issues.
John?
Yeah, one more comment, just, the other thing that, a clean audit like this goes to show is when we go to Moody's and we go to our other bond rating agencies, having a clean audit like this can save us millions of dollars. If, you know, if we go from an A to an A minus or an A minus minus, that can be a huge financial impact on us. So having a clean report like this is really important to the long-term stability of the utility. So thank you again for doing that.
And I'll just maybe close it out by saying, only downside, and I don't want to be downer, I've already done it.
No.
No, it's not, it's not. You've done such an exemplary job of getting this through, and you and staff and everybody, but the bar's so high, you're whatever, we could have this same type of report, aren't we? This is, this is, I've been through like 14 of these, 15 of these, this is probably the best one I've seen. So congratulations to everybody involved, staff and everybody, so thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you. And thank you, Julie, I'm waving at you behind me on the screen.
Nice to see you all.
You didn't have to drive down from Seattle this time, did you? That's good.
I have to say, I'm very appreciative, because I'm actually on the East Coast, I'm visiting my son, he's a freshman at Purdue University, so I'm able to be with him this week, which is just a joy, so most of the time. He is 19.
Thank you very much. If that's it, then, that's a Jedi. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie.
I don't think Purdue's on the East Coast, though, is it?
Not quite.
She's good with math, but not geography.
Time zone, it's on the eastern time zone, how bad.
My mom went to Purdue, and I know it, but it's not on the eastern sea. All right, agenda number eight, you guys like order something, RFP process and document approval. Right, Anne?
Let's pass it to Anne.
Any commissioners, we're here before you tonight to seek your approval of the RFP package that we proposed needs to sell E-Web's superfront property. The project team has been applying the guidance received from all of you over the last several months to put together a process that outlines the roles and responsibilities of all parties involved, acceptable property acquisition options, evaluation criteria and scoring, as well as steps the board may use to select the proposal that's in the best interest of E-Web, our customer owners, and the community. Once the property is sold, E-Web will use that money in the best interest of our customer owners to make wise investments to control costs and rates. The board will then make a decision to decide the highest and best use of cash, taking into consideration our strategic plans, financial policies, and current financial condition at the time that takes place. So the RFP contains questions that aim to get information from proposals to help you make the best decision. The criteria and associated points are meant to reflect your goals and priorities for selling the property. Your board packets contain this detailed information, and brief, you'll see that criteria displayed on the slide. Economic benefit to customer owners is the sales price. Economic benefit to the community includes both quantitative and qualitative attributes, such as getting the buildings back on the tax rolls and the potential for job creation and tourism. Future intended use community benefit addresses the legacy outcome of your decision. Terms, conditions, and contingencies could include a proposers exceptions to the sample purchase and sale agreement, some qualifying things that might have to happen before they can close the deal, and things of that nature. And it's also a place where we can get some follow-through assurance to make sure that the property's outcome is as presented, and this could be in the form of a deed restriction or something of that nature. And then lastly, the triangle lot impact to future intended use has no appointments associated with it, as it's only informational, and meant to help the board with their future decision around whether to sell the triangle lot separately. So tonight, because we are doing an RFP process, we've scheduled a public hearing to give customers and community members the opportunity to comment on the process we've laid out before the board deliberates and potentially takes action. So at this time, we'll turn it back over to President Brown, in case any commissioners wish to make a statement and to open the public hearing.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing for the RFP process for the E-Web headquarters property. Is there anybody signed up or?
Not that I'm in.
Okay. And I will close the public hearing, but I will now open a queue to the commissioners to see if there's comments about the RFP process and document approval.
Yeah, I just want to thank you and the staff and the team that helped develop this, that would be Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Carlson, who are the commissioners that sat on the working group. I think we came up with a RFP that will help us inform when we have to make this big decision, and so I'm really hoping that we'll get a robust group of people that will submit RFPs so that we have a hard time finding, finding the right one, because they're all going to be great projects. That's what I'm really, really hoping for. I hope we're not stuck with just one or two and have to make that type of choice, and if that is the case, I even want to resubmit the RFP again if we don't get them qualified and projects that rise to the need for the use of that private piece of real estate. So thank you for your hard work.
Other comments, questions?
Well, I'm supportive of it. We obviously had a big role in putting it together, but I really wanted to thank Anne and all the people trying to herd us together and keeping us on task every week with different topics that we guided us through. So thank you for all the work you did, and for all the other staff involved and, you know, adding comments, and it was, it was a really thorough process, week after week, we had a number of meetings through it, and I'm proud of what we did, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it, how it plays out. The proof is in the pudding, right? So thanks, everyone.
I'd like to reiterate that support from staff, I mean, with purchasing and real estate and everybody involved, I mean, it was squeezed in a balloon, we'd go one way, and then somebody, whoa, 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 that's a purchasing law, contracting law and everything else, and everybody kept us online, and Anne did a great job of herding cats, and, you know, getting everybody together once a week, and we did it, and so we didn't do it, you did it, and so thank you very much to that. I do have one question for Frank, and that's, we were going to, kind of along your line, John, you know, what's the point that we don't accept any? And I don't know what that point is. If it's, if the highest bid is $6 million, do we say, is that acceptable? Or if the highest bid is, you know, I mean, I still want that someplace in this process personally, I mean, it's five of us that have to vote, but I don't know what that threshold is, or what the basis for that threshold would be, not only just the range of use and users, but the price. So, yes.
President Brown, it is baked into the process between, after when the RFP goes out, we will have meetings with staff and the board liaisons to develop some specific instructions around the evaluation process, of which the board can have discussions that would establish certain minimum thresholds. So that is in the process. I believe that there is even a meeting scheduled for that, and Anne can correct me, but I believe it was June or July, where that can be discussed specifically with the board in executive session. As you may actually have a slide coming up on that now that I think of it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, the next, you know, this is, this is an action item, is to approve the RFP process and document approval, so I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Move by Carlson, second by McCray. Any other discussion? John?
The only other discussion that I would have is the, we talked about the communication process to get the word out to that. Is that baked and fully vetted, and do we think that we're going to get it all to all the people who want to see it, or is that something that we're still working on?
We do have some things in motion, I think. I've been speaking to a number of people who've already expressed early interest. This goes back to last summer when we did the survey of interest, and a few others have hopped on board since we've started doing press releases, and a few news media picked up the story, and I've been contacted by others since then. I sent them all an update just yesterday to let them know that you all would be considering this decision this evening, and so I'll keep updating them, and we will be posting this on E-Web's website, Oregon Buys, and in newspapers of record, the Register-Guard and the Weekly for certain, and I believe the Daily Journal of Commerce, and we'll probably do another press release as well, and news stories on eweb.org, and we'll even have a little infomercial in our upcoming customer benchmark survey. We're open to any and all suggestions if there's other.
Just, so just for, to make it clear to me, the Oregon Buys, that's the thing that goes out, like if we want to do a contract for building a water facility or whatever, that goes out to everybody in the state type of a deal, is that right?
That's a website that purchasing uses. I think Remy or Quentin can probably speak a little bit more to that, because they use it regularly.
Well, that, that's okay, just as long as it's being broadly distributed, that's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passed unanimously, thank you very much. The next gen item is the second public input opportunity for in-person. I don't see anybody here that wants to take advantage of that, so Anne, we'll just move right through that, and so I'll just have a process check with everybody. Although we have a meeting scheduled till 10 o'clock tonight, we are about an hour and 20 minutes ahead of schedule, so we, but we are, the next gen item is a break. You guys want to take a 10-minute break and come back and do IRP and the general management performance, or you want to take a break? Okay, I've got to vote for a break. We're going to adjourn. 10 minutes, we'll reconvene at 7:15. Thank you. I'm going to reconvene the April 5, 2022 meeting of the June Water Electric Board. The next agenda item is the file of IRP planning. Megan?
Good evening, commissioners. So I'm Megan Capper, Energy Resources Manager, and I'm here with Ben O'Reilly, Senior Energy Resource Analyst. Before we get started, I'm going, I wanted to share with you that we have key new employees in California. You will recall we had a couple key members of our analytical team who unexpectedly retired last year. So we now have an Aaron Bush, Energy Analyst, who comes from the Pacific Public Power Council, and John Kreier, who is Senior Analyst and going to be a core modeler, who comes to us from the Oregon Public Utility Commission. So we're just really fortunate and wanted to just announce that we do have a full team and we're really excited to be heading the program. Tonight is our first of several board influential meetings preparing us to meet our organizational goal number five, which is delivery of a public draft integrated resource plan, or IRP, by this December. In February, in the February board meeting, we walked through the IRP roadmap and agreed on guiding principles. We talked about the Integrative Resource Plan as a technical study and an action plan. And we learned that there are four primary elements to the study. First is customer load characteristics, then we have resource characteristics, alternative alternatives, and then development of an action plan. As you can see, we look around under April. Tonight, we're going to explore customer load characteristics. EWEB has an obligation to serve our customers' electricity needs 24/7, 365 days a year, now and in the future. And our IRP is helping us to play out to that future. Tonight, we're going to look at the key drivers of electricity consumption and how they impact our customers' electricity uses as they change by season, month, day, and even hour, providing us with insight to how we plan for the future. At the end of the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and comment. So I'm going to hand it over to Ben.
So tonight, we're here to talk about how much our EWEB electricity, how much electricity our EWEB customers use and the forecast for the future. Throughout this presentation, I'm going to be using terms like demand or load somewhat interchangeably, but they all are talking about the same thing, is electricity consumptions of all our, electricity consumption of all our customers. Talking about consumption as part of the IRP, we need to have a solid understanding of EWEB's load in order to make decisions on the best mix of resources for our future. Power planning, we use two different types of metrics to illustrate electricity consumption over time, average load and peak load. Both are useful, but in different ways. Annual average load is helpful for providing a sense of scale of electricity consumption and long-term trends. But an average can hide the variability from hour to hour, day to day, and year to year. Peak load, on the other hand, is the highest amount of electricity consumption for a particular period of time. And by looking at the maximum value, we can see what EWEB's electricity needs are during the more extreme but less frequent events. So tonight, we're going to be talking about average load and peak load, how much load that, how much that load can vary throughout the year. In August, we'll be coming back to the board to talk about resource options, which can be used to meet these electricity needs. We have different ways of measuring a resource's ability to meet our needs. Capacity needs refers to our need to serve peak loads, serve peak loads, and certain resources are best suited to meet those capacity needs. Energy needs refers to our need to serve load over time, which is reflected by the day and the hour and the season. Our future portfolio will be a mix of resources that can serve both our energy needs and our capacity needs. Before we talk about these resources, we need to understand the historic and future consumption of electricity. This chart shows a lot of things about average load and peak load over the course of the year, but it's kind of busy. So we're going to get oriented first. This chart shows daily averages, minimums, and maximums over the course of a year based on 11 years of historical data. The black line in the middle shows daily averages. The blue shaded area around the black line represents two standard deviations above and below the average. As a refresher to your most recent statistics class, that means that 95% of historical load falls within two standard deviations of the average, meaning that 95% of our historical load actually falls in that blue shaded area around the average line. The gray dots at the top show the maximum historical loads on those days, and the orange dots at the bottom show the minimum historical loads on the day, on those days. Right away, you can see that the variation in our loads that I'm talking about, and how looking at an overall annual average of 275 megawatts doesn't necessarily tell the whole story. You can also see that our winter loads are typically higher than average and that our summer loads are typically lower than average. The key takeaway for the IRP is that it's not enough for EWEB to just buy enough resources to meet our annual average loads. We often say you can't fly through the mountains at an average altitude. Peak hours show a similar seasonality with our winter peaks being roughly 100 megawatts higher than our summer peaks. Historical data on this chart includes some typical peaks, which are around 465 megawatts, which we would call our one and two peaks. When we say one and two, we mean that that load is estimated to occur once in every two years or 50% of the time. You'll also see some very high peaks above 500 megawatts, which are circled here. Here are examples of one-hour peaks expected to occur once in every 10 to 25 years. While our planning metrics forecast, while our planning metrics forecast that EWEB has an annual average load of about 275 megawatts and a peak of 465, it's important to know that our actual consumption throughout the year varies, and that 95% of the time, our load is somewhere between 200 and 400 megawatts, which is in this gray shaded area. So as you can see in the chart, we're pretty much always consuming at least 200 megawatts of electricity, which would be considered EWEB's base load. We also, as we plan for electricity needs that are greater than 400 megawatts, we're planning for energy needs that are a lot less frequent. As we consider resources needs in the IRP, we're going to be thinking to find specific resources that may be better suited to serve to serve those particular peak needs. So the previous chart showed seasonal variation in load, but this is, this chart shows the variation that we can experience in just a single day. The chart starts at 1:00 a.m. on the x-axis, and it goes until midnight, and it shows you the changing load throughout a 24-hour period. You'll see a 1 in 10 summer peak day in yellow, and 1 in 10 peak day in blue. That's a winter peak, excuse me. An early takeaway is that our winter peak load is consistently higher than our summer load, and it illustrates that EWEB is currently a winter-peaking utility, and the summer peak is only about 80% of our winter peak. You'll note that the shapes are different. Winter and summer daily peaks happen at different hours of the day. Winter has two distinct bumps, the first bump being in the morning when you turn on your heaters and your lights, and it maxes out around 8:00 a.m. Electricity use then drops in the middle of the day as the sun warms up in the winter. Then around 4:00 p.m., that load starts to increase again as people come home, they start to cook dinner, they watch TV, and they turn up their thermostats again. Summer is different. Air conditioning load just steadily increases throughout the day as it gets hotter outside, peaking in the late afternoon around 3:00 p.m. While there are other factors like days of the week or holidays can affect our load shapes, ultimately, the weather is what causes our greatest variation in our loads and is the key driver of our system peaks. This chart is a scatter plot showing temperature on the x-axis and historical system load as temperature changes. Each gray dot represents one hour of time between 2017 and 2020. You look at the upper-left area of the chart, you can see that EWEB's highest loads are above 500 megawatts, and that happens when the temperature is below 20 degrees. The yellow trend line shows the correlation between temperature and system load. Green dots are each one hour of that June 2021 heat dump event that we had. Green line is the trend line for that particular heat dump event. And you can see that even during that extreme heat, our winter peak loads were still much higher. If we treat 65 degrees Fahrenheit as a comfort temperature, which is illustrated with this black line, you can see that most of the data is skewed to the left, showing that temperature is more often lower than 65 degrees than it is above 65 degrees, makes a lot of sense given our climate. This deviation from the comfort comfort temperature can be quantified in a metric called heating degree days, which quantifies how much lower the daily average temperature was compared to 65 degrees. Heating degree days and cooling degree days can be useful in energy planning because we can use it to estimate electricity use. Even if you could predict the weather, though, there's still a range of possible outcomes due to other factors like day of the week or industrial loads. And imagine that means staff are constantly doing our best to predict the future while recognizing that variation from our estimates can happen within the year or the month or the hour. If we do our best to plan for the future, long-term trends, we also need to recognize that there's variability. A great example of this is actually our budgeting process, which makes best efforts to predict future energy use. Next year, we recognize that our annual results may vary from our budgeted assumptions. I'm going to warn you, this is a pretty busy chart. This next slide is an example of budget monitoring and when we see temperature deviating from averages. This is actually a chart that's prepared by our friends in finance, as they compile daily system load data for the month of February this year. What they're looking at is how our load deviated from the budgeted assumptions. This is a complex chart, so I'm just highlighting some key data points here at the bottom and top. One of the variables in the chart is a comparison between the budgeted heating degree days and the actuals, and you can see that it's a positive number indicating that there was more heating degree days that was budgeted. And then, of course, we have this system peak in the month of February, a low temperature of 21 degrees outside, and so we had a peak on that day of 483 megawatts on February 23rd. So while our temperature-to-load comparison chart on the previous slide can help us estimate load based on temperature, it still remains an imperfect science. But there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, and staff is constantly working to monitor these key drivers. In the years ahead, as we learn more about our customers' energy use, advance metering data, we may be able to help improve the precision of our forecasting. Now that we've talked about historical electricity consumption and the variability, we want to discuss how EWEB does load forecasting. EWEB currently uses an econometric model. The model considers certain key variables that help us predict future energy consumption. For example, we know that energy use correlates with population growth, so by adding a population forecast to our forecasting tool, we can better estimate electricity consumption. The same process for unemployment data, as well as heating and cooling degree days. The current load forecast assumes that our population is going to grow at a little less than 1% per year, which is in line with historical trends. And for unemployment, we're assuming that we're going to see lower unemployment in the next five years as the economy recovers from the pandemic, before returning to a historical median of 6.6% unemployment. The model also uses the most recent 30 years of historical degree, most recent 30 years of heating degree data to come up with a forecast, and the most recent 10 years of cooling degree data to do a cooling degree forecast. We believe that using more recent historical data better incorporates the impacts of climate change into our forecasting process. In addition to the econometric, econometric data, our load forecast also considers other variables. Some are discrete inputs, like a large industrial customer closing or opening. These large customers are sometimes called new large single loads. There are also emergent trends like electrification. Based on the results of our most recent electrification study, EWEB's forecasting electrification will cause a gradual increase in our electricity consumption over time. Conservation has the opposite effect of electrification. Programs that promote energy conservation can be used to decrease our system load over time. The previous IRP in 2011 actually identified conservation as the most cost-effective way to manage our loads. Looking at the historical annual app, excuse me, sorry. Since 2011, EWEB has used conservation to manage our load growth, but we aren't assuming conservation will be, always be the best way to serve our load growth. For this IRP in 2022, we'll be going to treat conservation as a resource that can be used to meet our needs, just like wind and solar. We plan to discuss the assumptions about conservation as a resource with the board in August. So that brings us to our 20-year forecast for the IRP. This chart shows the trend in annual average megawatts through 2042. And as I said, population growth is a contributing factor. The larger contributing factor is electrification. Looking at the historic annual averages in black, you can see that large decline around 2008 due to the closure of the Heineken semiconductor plant. With our forecasted load growth, annual energy use is not expected to surpass our historic levels until 2035. Given the amount of uncertainty, though, in predicting our load or even the potential for load loss, we plan to do some sensitivity analysis to consider how our IRP might be impacted by this load forecasting uncertainty. This next slide, slide is the peak forecast through 2042. Note that the numbers on the y-axis now go much higher because we're talking about maximum system load. EWEB is only expected to experience these peaks one hour out of the entire year, and most of the time, our load is actually within two standard deviations of the average, which is shown here as a black line. For context, we've shown the typical one and two system peaks in blue. We've also added the less frequent one in 10 system peaks in orange. The peaks on this chart were calculated without the effects of conservation or other demand-side management programs, like incentives for customers to charge their EVs during off-peak times. Just like the average forecast, you can see that the typical peak load is not expected to surpass historic levels until 2035. While peak events can happen infrequently, they're still important for power planning as we think about uncertainty. We think that it's best practice to plan our energy supply around one and two system peaks so that we can avoid routinely relying on market purchases to serve our energy needs. Relying on the market can expose EWEB to resource adequacy risk and market pricing risks. However, procuring large amounts of energy far ahead of time to meet these infrequent peaks can be, not always be cost-effective. As we continue our IRP modeling work, we plan to analyze the impacts of our peak planning standards and how our resource portfolio may meet our peak and average electricity So why do our customers' electricity loads matter for the IRP? Our customers' electricity demand is ultimately what drives our need for resources. But that's, we know that's a moving target. Electricity use varies by the hour and season, which is caused by both customer behavior and weather. From a planning perspective, we know that our annual average load is 275 megawatts, and our typical peak hour is 465, but that only tells part of the story. The variability that we see in our load will inform the mix of resources that are, will best fit EWEB's needs. Some resources will be used to meet our infrequent system peaks, while some will be useful to meet our energy needs across seasons. Some resources are dispatchable and can respond to changes in customer demand, and some resources will be dispatched by Mother Nature. As we look to the future, we're anticipating that our electricity needs will grow over time, and population growth is contributing to this, and electrification is also a bigger driver. We know that the load forecasting has an inherent, inherent uncertainty about the future, and we plan to consider this in our IRP modeling by doing some sensitivity analysis, where we consider a possible decline in our loads, as well as other variations from our forecast. We hope that the deeper dive into a customer load is helpful for the board and gives more insight into our load forecasting process. There are many parts of the IRP modeling work, but understanding our customers' needs is key before we begin discussing the resources that can best fit those needs.
As you can see, there are a lot of moving pieces. It's complex work, and our customers are looking to us to meet their energy needs today and into the future. The IRP process asks us to think about the key drivers of our load and to consider how these drivers, like population, climate change, unemployment, electrification, will change over time to meet that load. This is our high-level timeline to engage the board on key IRP topics. Our next informational meeting is in August, where we'll talk about resource characteristics. But between now and then, we're going to be setting up small group discussions as we heard you, the board, we really look forward to those discussions, and we'll open it up to comments and questions.
Well, thank you very much, Megan and Ben. You know, I've said too, for a lot of reasons, and again, that was one of the most understandable explanations I've had in a zillion years. So thank you. For me, it was very educational, and I'm very appreciative of that because many times that stuff goes right over my head. But thank you. So you, you got the dummy on the team, so good. So I'll open up the queue and, and see if anybody other has any questions or not. I have one small question, if I can go ahead and start.
My price assumption, commodity price assumption did you use in your forecasting? I mean, as the price of electricity goes up, a lot of people don't use as much. So what assumption on prices did you use in projecting that demand out to the future?
I've got an answer to that. So in our IRP, we kind of just look at, look at demand without interfering with any sort of new pricing regime or anything like that. We're just saying, what are the key drivers of demand? And then we can use a potential resource to meet that demand. So we did time-of-use pricing or things like that. That could change your customer demand, and, and those products are called demand-response programs, or there's just different ways to send people signals to change their consumption pattern. So conservation is a great example, too, right? That's an example where we have an incentive to have people curtail their energy use or to use less electricity. So this forecast is before EWEB intervenes, resources or customer demand-side programs that influence their behavior.
So you just assumed a flat consumption price and no, no EWEB rate increases through that projection series? Because I'm just saying, if, you know, you raise the price of a commodity, people tend to consume less. And I'm just wondering if we continue to raise the price of electricity, there will be less consumption, and I'm just making sure that that's what you just said.
I don't think we, we don't include it like a discrete input like you're talking about, that feedback loop of how customer pricing changes.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm just assuming in the models you just presented that it was just a flat price all along.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Others have better questions. Matt, come on.
All right. Thanks for the memo and, yeah, and the presentation, the memo, as John just said, really laid it all out. I started writing questions at the beginning, and then I found as I went through it, oh, it's all my questions. So thank you for that. I also appreciate breaking down the IRP into bite-sized pieces because there's a lot to consume here, and this is like very well done. I appreciate that very much. I want to acknowledge that the circumstances around energy planning are, like the complexity of it is just going through the roof, and I appreciate that our, we're dedicating resources to making sure we're out ahead of that, and the work you're doing is, is super important. So thank you for bringing it. I would be interested in seeing more of the results from the electrification study included into these charts as we look at them, just so as we're thinking about ultimately, you know, the next steps, we're able to think about, okay, what are the effects of electrification separately or different levels of electrification when we look at the overall projected peak or projected load over time and things like conservation? I know we're talking about that in the next round, and I also recognize you kind of have to keep, you have to simplify things so it doesn't get too complicated in a graph. But, you know, anywhere we can include sensitivities that help remind us all of, like, here's some of the impacts of, you know, conservation at some level, cost-effective conservation, if we can estimate that, I think that would be helpful. I know the, the electrification study showed the maximum level of electrification at being something, it was 50, right, 50% of buildings or of residents? Is it all buildings? I should know this, but I don't. Of buildings being electrified, right? Residential buildings.
Under the aggressive carbon reduction scenario, which was a scenario of the study, but not our base case.
Right, right. No, understood. Right. So I think including that, just again, to demonstrate for us, what does that look like in comparison to our just assumed increase over time? What would we expect that higher-level scenario to look like? I also think it'd be super valuable, and I think I mentioned this when we were looking at the electrification study earlier, to see an even more aggressive scenario, just to have a sense of like, how sensitive is all of this to? For example, if we were hitting 50% electrification by 2035 and 100% by 2050, which most people who are looking at carbon emissions say something like that is necessary. I'm not saying that's necessarily going to happen, but it would be useful to know, you know, for us and for other policymaking bodies that are thinking about this, what would the impact be on our overall energy use? Again, the fact that it wasn't in the electrification study may make that hard to ease out, but if it's not super complicated, that would be valuable to include. And then I have one other question, but I'll wait for another round.
Okay, next.
Very, very interesting question. I hope that you can maybe share the results. I don't think you're going to answer it tonight, but if you did use econometric modeling, I was wondering if you could share the hypothesis and the variables that allow us to, and the consumer, that sort of data, and would love to see the actual details and the variance and the R factors and all that. So not tonight, but if you don't mind, at some point, I'd love to just see behind the curtain a little bit. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question about the assumption of peak summer use, and I know in the graphs that you showed, you included the super-hot day that we had, days that we had last summer. But I'm just curious, like, going forward, if we continue to have these heat waves over the summer, is there something built in that shows, like, more people installing air conditioning and then what that would do to the, to energy use, instead of just assuming that, like, the, our, our energy use or, or air conditioning level will stay steady? Because I'm just guessing that if it gets hotter and hotter, that more people will install air conditioning and then we'll see that peak maybe go up even more? I don't know if that was something that you considered or not.
That's a really good question. That's a question that's being asked all over the region, right after, particularly after the heat dome event. And I think all utilities are trying to get an understanding of how that end use is, is growing in their service territory, and we're not, we're not unique. We don't, right now, have a particularly great handle on that. We recognize that there's a gap, and it would be really beneficial to incorporate that data into our analysis, and so we'll be looking at how, how we can do that.
Great, thank you.
John B?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Something that jumped out to me and that I'll want, we wanted to hear back in August is the percentage of our customers. So 90% of our customers are residential, 10% are industrial, but 50% of the load is industrial and 50% is residential. So for me, the strategies that we're looking for in conservation and demand management are going to be very important on the industrial side. If we can, if we can figure out ways to get those done, or it's bigger bag for the buck, you know, if we're, if we're selling half of our power to industrial customers, and we can figure out a way to say, hey, if you start at 9 o'clock instead of 7 o'clock your shift, we can save you this money. Or if you, you know, those types of things are things that I'm going to be looking for in the conservation side. On the demand response side, you know, certain industries, you know, you can't, you can't have snow temp turn off the compressors, you know, because, because we've got a peak demand. But are there other industries, industrial users, that we might be able to work the conservation and demand management on? Because for me, that's going to be the biggest buck. If we can, if we have a residential peak and we can call or incentivize a few of our large industrial customers to change their demands, we may not have to buy 100 megawatts at peak prices if we can, if we can get them to save that. And so that's one of the things that I'll definitely be looking for in the August.
Okay, so that's, it's a real, it's a fabulous comment. What the IRP, the Integrated Resource Plan, is, the modeling is going to show us, is it's going to, first of all, show us where we have gaps in resources under different, you know, features. And so we're going to be able to see if there's going to be, what types of resources? And so we very well may see that there's a really good opportunity for some energy efficiency that costs us X amount to Y amount. And that is where we'll have to do that deeper dive after. So I think that what you're, what you're coming up with and what you're thinking is exactly where we need to go. The IRP is going to show us, is, is energy efficiency, you know, is there certain buckets of costs of energy efficiency that we need to go after? And then we'll have to say, okay, where are those within our service territory? And then do more research. And that's kind of where I would say, when we start getting down into action items for, between this, this IRP and our next IRP, depending on the results, that's where we would start to see maybe an action item or for staff to go out and do more of that research.
And then, and then the other part that's going to be interesting to me is, is the resources that we control, right? The generation resources that we control. And, and I'm thinking dispatchable, and when I think dispatchable, I think carbon, right? And, and, and the times that we can turn on and off car, carbon to get rid of those so we don't have to buy it at the peak market. And knowing how that plays into the IRP, you know, how many megawatts is the maximum that we can get out of carbon on a super-hot day, that, that type of a deal. Something that, maybe in these little more breakout sessions, we can get down into that, that type of minutia. And then, at some point, the, the question of carbon intensity of the IRP that we're, that we're looking at, you know, how carbon intensive is the portfolio that we're proposing to move forward with? And, and what cost, you know, what cost benefit that is for us if we want to, you know, and that's, and I think that's where we get into the policy decision, is, you know, do we want to have higher prices at a less carbon intense portfolio or lower prices in one that may be more carbon intense? So that's, knowing when and where we, we can weigh in on those policy issues will be important to me.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one more question. Really quick. All right. I am grateful that you're thinking about climate and how that'll impact future demand. I appreciate you addressing that here. It sounds like our step right now is to shorten the historic average in order to kind of reference some of those bigger swings and potentially changing averages. I, and I think you said that this is something that utilities are all over trying to figure out, is how do we look at the forecast? And I just encourage them to, even if it's not perfect, to take a look at what we have, you know, what, what know, what, what is available and try and see what we can say, because we have some certainty about the levels of change. It's not, I understand our climate projections don't tell you five years out, here's what it's going to look like. But even just kind of direction, so in order of magnitude, I think would be helpful for us all to just keep in mind, right? As we're looking at peak summer loads, for example, we can assume that those are going to bump up. We don't know how much. But I think, you know, shading that even in a graph, just so we're, we're thinking about that and seeing what it might look like would be useful. Thank you again for the work.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. Frank, that's it. Frank Scott, one comment?
Yeah, I was just going to appreciate the fact that, that the board in, in listening to the, the basic discussion around consumption patterns starts to actually lead into some of the follow-on questions, which is around, there is a difference between the past and the future, for example. You're touching on the fact that the past may not reflect the future. And so when you're looking at load forecasts, you need to be able to inject sensitivities into both the resource side and the, and the consumption side. Commissioner Borowski, what you're starting to talk about when you, when you start talking about conservation is that there are, there are different profiles of conservation. And those are treated as resources, just like you would have a difference between Columbia Gorge Wind and Montana Wind. Those have different profiles. So conservation for certain types of industries would be, would be different. And you would be able to evaluate those as resources in the context of, of your sort of supply mixing with demand. So these, these are to come sensitivities, you know, once we understand the base case and the assumptions around a forecast, we can then start to look at the resource mix. That'll be the next discussion, what a resources mix starts to look like. And then you start to put them together in different portfolios and test out which ones give you the best overall results from a carbon perspective, for example, from a flexibility perspective, from a capacity perspective, as they talked about capacity. So this is, this is one sort of spoke in the wheel, and, and there's definitely more to come. And as you can see, it, it gets, it's going to get pretty complex, but we're going to have to boil it back to where does the, the board start to contribute philosophies and decisions and action plans and those things. I appreciate what staff put together.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order on this topic? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great presentation. Okay, the next agenda item is going to be the general manager's annual performance evaluation. Okay. We won't have background information on this. And we won't discuss it in executive session, as you know. And now is the time to decide whether or not, we want to comment first about Frank's overall evaluation and what, how we perceive his performance over the last 12 months. Anybody want to start in? Go first?
Okay, go ahead. Yeah. I want to reiterate that we had a fair amount of conversation in, in executive session, not only amongst ourselves, but with Frank. So we don't wade into all of that in this public session. But I do want to say, as I've said to you, Frank, I feel like this utility has been throwing so many curveballs over the last year, and especially the last couple. And I feel like we're still on track, you know, and, and doing really solid work. So I just want to appreciate the, the efforts that you put in, the team that you have around you. You know, I recognize it's a whole team of people who make this whole utility run. Anyway, but your leadership clearly is, is doing the trick right now. And I appreciate the work.
Any other swift comment?
No comment. I think you've done an exemplary job. I've gone through three general managers. I'm not going to say any one is better than the other, but you're really good. I know that it's, in managing this is not easy. And what we see is just a small microcosm of what you do. And, and what I'm really impressed with is your ability to take ownership of stuff that we may not agree with. When you, you know, this evening, when we had a little issue, you said you took ownership of it, you'll change it, and you got right after it. You didn't make any excuses. You just said, okay. That is a, is a sign of a, a really good leader, in my opinion. And I know how private sector work look at it, and you having to work in the public sector and manage five of us and 450 others is an exemplary feat. And so I, I think you've done a great job personally. And so I want to thank you for doing what you do, because it reflects, you know, we serve a commodity that people don't have a choice with. And it's a commodity that it's life and death for a lot of people. You can't, you can't live without what we provide. And watching how this organization operates both daily and in crisis during storm events and other things is, you know, people look to us for leadership. And that's because of you and the, the climate you cultivated in. So I, for one, am very proud of what you've done and really want that.
Other question, comments?
I appreciate how every year just gets a little bit better and a little bit better. And I love the attention to continuous improvement and learning from both the wins and the failures. And I mean, it just shows in how reactive situations, and I'm sure it shows in how teams treat one another, too. It's not about personal styles and such. It's about, let's figure out the problem, figure out the cause of it, let's find solutions that meet the needs of our customers, and let's communicate that to internally to the staff and, you know, and externally to customers and help us so that we can help you. And it's just, I look forward to continuing to work with you and really appreciate you and everybody that, you know, you've got kind of rowing in the same direction now. I feel like, you know, we've got good momentum and, yeah, we keep hitting lots of rapids, but keep staying afloat. And not only staying afloat, but, you know, whizzing on through. And I really appreciate all that. So thank you for everything you and continue to do.
Andy?
Yeah. I think this is something I said in our executive session about this, but something to echo what Sonia has said is, in the short time that I've been on this board, I really have noticed just a maturity of the organization or the way that things are run. Everything just seems to keep getting better and more professional and a little bit tighter and seems like a more cohesive team. And you're the leader of that team. So that, that's on you, Frank. So thank you so much for that. And I also do appreciate, like other board members have said, that when something doesn't go right, or it's not something the board wants, or there's some kind of error made, that you are really quick to, just, you don't get defensive, you offer course corrections and figure out how to fix it. And I really appreciate that, because I know that that can sometimes be something that's, that's hard to do. And then, I guess lastly is, I feel that this is a really well-functioning board. And part of that is your relationship with us as well. I think that we are all kind of a team together. And I think that I really just appreciate the guidance and leadership that you provide to the board as well. So thank you for all of your hard work.
John B?
Thank you. Yeah, I can, I can echo all, all of what's been said. We did have a Frank discussion, truly a Frank discussion about Frank in, in executive session. And it was, it was very helpful. So I'm going to move this along, because the second part of this conversation is whether we, whether or not we want to amend the compensation that is afforded the general manager. And, you know, in these times, prices are going up, things are going up, and also, the compensation for good employees needs to go up as well. In my opinion, I've, I've seen it in my, in my business, you know, to hang on to good employees, you've got to compensate them correctly. I think Frank has, has shown that he's done a good job over the past year. And I think what I would like to propose is that we add a 3% increase to his base salary as a performance bonus compensation. This is what we did last year when he helped get us through the pandemic. And I think that that would be an appropriate thing. And I would like to put that forward if that's appropriate.
Sonia?
I just had a quick question. Do you want to do a one-time bonus, or is it a permanent increase in the pay?
Just like we did last year, which was a 3% increase to his base salary. Isn't that what we did last year?
It was a 3%. Okay.
It was, yeah.
Okay.
The board gave recognition, the board informed a 3% increase to the GM's base salary.
Thank you.
And I think that that was an appropriate amount and kind of going with what it is.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to increase Frank's base salary by 3%. Now discussion. Discussion.
I'll speak to, I'll speak to the motion. I'm going to support it. I know it's, you know, you know, you're absolutely right. You get what you pay for. And I think he's done an exemplary job. I know that, you know, you've got to be careful what you do here and the message you send, but I don't think what we're saying is out of line with what's in the market, what's going on. You know, inflation's eight to 10%. So I get it. I know what you can do in the private sector with a competent skill set. So I think I'm going to support the motion.
Andy, would you like to comment? You don't have to. We're just, we've got a motion on the floor in a second.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any comment.
That's fine. Matt, any comment?
I don't think you make it any more awkward than it already is.
I'm just sitting here at the.
This is always a challenging thing to do, but it's the law and we have to do it in public session. So, oh, well.
Yeah, no comments, son.
Okay, that's fine. Then I'm going to call the question. The motion on the floor is increase Frank Lawson's base salary by 3%. It'll become effective May. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by a say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Frank?
Well, I, I appreciate it. And commissioners, I, I feel like part of our organizational philosophy is to ensure that, that our compensation for all of our employees is fair. And later this year, we will do a more, a deeper dive into compensation across the utility to ensure that we are remaining competitive, to your point, Commissioner Borowski. I'd also point out that, that I do have the pleasure of working with a really good board, a very functional board, one that cares about the community and you represent your constituents well. And, and the fact that I have a great staff and great teammates that I work with is really important to me. We, across the utility, you know, almost to an employee, we, we care really deeply about the products and services that we provide, and we recognize the importance of it to the community. And that permeates throughout the organization. And so I really do feel like I'm blessed with a good team. And we've been tested some throughout the last few years. But I do believe that, and appreciate the fact that a couple commissioners noticed that we're continuing to improve. And I, and I think in order to do that, you have to be able to recognize when you do something right. You also have to be able to recognize when you make a mistake. And if you go into that understanding your intention, then you can make corrections. And you can, you can own it when it doesn't work out like you want. And you can make corrections and learn from that and move forward in a different way. So I appreciate my senior staff, leadership across the utility, and staff really across the utility for the continued work that they do. And they, they make my job enjoyable almost always. We all have challenges that creep up, but I do want to just thank the staff and then thank the board, because it really is, you know, it takes everyone in the utility to do what we do. And so I appreciate that. A vote of confidence. Thank you.
Matt, you had a comment?
Yeah, one of the things we talked about is that you do 360 reviews, which is fantastic. And I would encourage us to continue. I would suggest that perhaps next year, we make that, or at least provide some opportunity to do that anonymously. I think you'll get different feedback if you're able to get 360 feedback from your team unanimously. So just encourage us to give that a shot.
Yeah, I think also one of the things we'll do this year, we haven't done it in recent years, is a more, a little deeper dive into an employee survey. Some of that always touches on leadership, it touches on culture and some of the things, and it touches on my performance as well. So I think that will inform, inform us further, even beyond the 360 type of approach. Thank you.
Good. Next agenda item, I apologize, we're way ahead of schedule. Sorry. We're delayed for a while and taking out a very. Correspondence and board agendas.
Well, there was, there was a slew of correspondence this month, commissioners. And, and then there was one that, you know, I apologize for adding it after the official board run. That had to do with commissioners' request for an update on the partnership with Northwest Natural and the hydrogen project in particular. And especially relative to their 844 filing and the support they've requested from E-Web as, as that partnership. That was what I added after the fact. The others are, in many cases, are related to either strategic work going on or things that we do on an annual basis, just as part of our compliance and sort of situational reporting to the board. So the roster is there. If you had any additional comments or questions or guidance to provide, we'd be happy to either answer those or take that under consideration, depending on your feedback.
Okay. John?
Yeah, thank you for the, the reports. Just note that I did go through and read them. You know, the one that, that stuck out to me was the hedging and, and where we're going with hedging and that we're looking only a couple of years out right now. And I think that that's appropriate, considering where we are with the IRP. But also know, knowing that there's, you know, the report let us know a lot of variables are out, that are out there as, as far as price of natural gas and a bunch of other things that impact our hedging operations. So I appreciate the report and look forward to hearing more about those in the future.
Good. Matt?
Yeah, I just want to say the, the item on grant opportunities, appreciate that background. I appreciate the effort, the kind of organizing we're doing around grant, grant applications and, and opportunities to kind of filter those and be strategic around, you know, what would go after, what we don't. Yeah, there's, there are just so many opportunities right now with grant funding. I, I think regular updates as grants come through would, you know, just in this kind of format would be welcome, just to keep us aware of the resources that are being displayed together. I appreciate that we have hired somebody just to do, to focus on, on grant opportunities. I think that's a great move. So thanks for that update.
Keegan is very busy already. I, I would point out that I think in the case of, of grants and the formation of this, I'll call it clearinghouse team to evaluate opportunities, both opportunities on the funding side and as well as the project side, that is something that we'll probably routinely put into the quarterly reports, just kind of where we are with, with the grant process, at least in the near term, since that's, that's a newly formed group. Because there are a lot of opportunities out there. So appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're reporting here that Deborah put this together, that, you know, we're, the utility is receiving millions of dollars to help us do the work that we're doing. And in some places, helping us do the things that we couldn't afford to do otherwise, and in some place, offsetting our expenses and everything as a whole. So it's, it is significant.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, board wrap up?
Well, Commissioner Brown, that was correspondence. What, what I did want to mention, that there were a couple of changes to the board agenda report for future agendas. One of the things that I wanted to note for the board is that we've added an agenda item later in the year, I believe it's September, to talk about how we interact with customers, specifically things like the lobby. And so that was added. And so that was added, I believe, in September. I know there's been some customer feedback. In the meantime, we'll have an opportunity to do a customer survey, and that'll be part of what we ask in that customer survey is about preferred methods of interaction and lobbies and things like that. So I just wanted to make note that that, I know occasionally commissioners get feedback, hey, you guys closed the lobby, what's the deal? You know, we will have a discussion specifically around sort of a physical presence and where that fits in the rest of how we interact with customers. So I just wanted to make note of that since that's a new item. Thank you.
Soundboard wrap up, and I know you have a motion.
Yeah, I wanted to see if there was interest in, you know, pulling items and putting them as separate agenda items for contracts that are over $5 million. So if you'd like, I can make the motion and then we can have a discussion on it.
Go ahead.
Move to direct staff to investigate and propose applicable policy changes directing that all procurements presently requiring board approval in volumes over $5 million be moderated by the board as a dedicated agenda item.
Do your second.
One second.
Second by McCray. Discussion. John, please.
Yeah, I can see the merit in this, but I also can see a lot of these contracts are over an extended period of time. So that they're, you know, it's $1 million a year for five years, or it's, you know, $1.5 million a year for five years. And so I'm just wondering how, if we approve that and then things come back as higher or whatever, we've seen them in the past on this last consent calendar. It was like, okay, we had a contract and it wasn't quite enough, so we're adding to it. The PPP one was a prime example of that. So I don't know, do you distinguish between $5 million in one year? Do you distinguish to $5 million in total or $5 million over 10 years? I just am not clear on the threshold.
I mean, for me, if we are voting at $5 million at one time, and even if it's, you know, over multiple years, maybe even especially if it's over multiple years because we're now holding future boards to that decision, too. It just seems like it warrants a bigger discussion. And, you know, tonight I tested it out with the two that came up that were a little bit bigger. I don't know that we got much more from it, but I also think that there were some valid points that came up that I think were worth discussing. And it just stuck to me because I know in other government entities, that kind of a thing, it can't be on a consent calendar item. It's not something that's just kind of written off. And it's one of the most important things about it, is allocate. And, you know, again, the board packet has improved so much over, you know, the number of years that I've been here that it has so much more information in it that it may not warrant it. But it was just something I wanted to discuss with the board and find out if there was others that had sense.
Matt, you had a?
Yeah, I have a question, if you have a sense of how much, I mean, we don't have that many items over $5 million coming to us, you know, on consent. I'm just trying to get a sense of like, how much extra work are we asking for if we go this route?
Well, a couple of clarifications. So first of all, you're correct, they're not a lot over $5 million. I don't view this from a staff perspective as requiring more work. If it's going to be on the consent calendar, it's going to be a separate item. What it does is raise to the level of a separate board discussion so it doesn't get lost in the consent calendar in essence. I don't see this as being some extra work. I would point out, I think the motion actually asks direct staff to go back and look at the policy changes that it would take to implement this and propose something to the board. I would encourage the board to pass this, and we will bring something back for your consideration that maybe wrestles through some of the details that Commissioner Barofsky was asking about, what qualifies as the threshold or not, and how does it mix with the other things that were required to bring to the board. So I'm not a voter, but I believe that staff could provide the information that's requested in the motion.
Any other comments on this? Mindy, you want to chime in at all?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's willing, I'm willing to give it a try. And if it proves to be onerous and unnecessarily unnecessary, we can always then get rid of it. So.
I agree.
No, I'm just saying, I'd be inclined to support it.
Yeah, I think I'm going to support it, too. I mean, there are some contracts like tree trimming and flagging because we have prevailing wage, non-pervailing wage and all of that that, you know, that I'm going to kick to the curb because there's not a lot of explanation I need but some of them get up to that threshold, not to the $5 million, but they're getting there. And so I would support the motion that we take it to staff, have them come out with the proposal for telling us what it takes to do it. That doesn't mean we have to adopt it because the last thing I need to do is fill up the agenda even more than it's already full with pine because, you know, by the time we have a staff presentation and we have, everybody has three minutes, we've eaten up another half hour. And, you know, we've got, I wouldn't know, a $19 million contract for, is it right or not? But, you know, I've got that opportunity to pull it from the consent calendar and answer all the questions I want. And when we get a heads up, those managing the schedule can, you know, somebody says, Sonia says, I want to pull that $20 million reservoir contract, then we'll add another 15, 20 minutes to the consent calendar discussion on the agenda right there. And if not, then, I mean, there's a way to manage this. And so I'm going to support the motion, just for purposes of discussion. It doesn't mean I approve it. Any other comments? Was your motion seconded? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It was. Sonia, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor signify by aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, no, no, both passage unanimous. Thank you. Other items in board wrap up. Sonia?
I had one last item that I wanted to note. You know, we've voted on a number of real estate-related topics tonight, and I'm in the process of getting my real estate license, took my test, but I'm not fully licensed yet. So there might be other things that I would note moving forward, but I'm not employed by anyone or doing, you know, I'm not signed up with anything or do I have any customers and such. So just wanted to make that note moving forward.
Go together. Don't worry about it. We ordered dinner from somebody other than my restaurant. I don't have to declare that as a conflict of interest either, so.
Anything else from board wrap? I have one question. We got a river trip coming up in May, I think the 20th. And I just want to status that because there's nothing worse than paying for a boat to go down with nobody in it because this is to educate people and make it, can you give us an update if we need to go out and invite more electric officials or, you know, people that make a difference? I mean, it's an election year, so.
So far, we have 15 confirmed guests with five open seats and way more invitations out there than are pending our speaking.
Sounds like you're going to fill it.
Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you very much. Okay, I just want to make sure that we didn't have to go out and play the game.
President Brown moves down the list just a little bit. Sorry, I've been making notes to myself. Sorry. I'll take my vote and haunch you.
John?
Yeah, for me, I guess board wrap up, one of the things that I would hope for is before the Upriver trip in three weeks, or Upriver meeting in three weeks, we have some sort of heads up, maybe more than a day or two before as to what to expect up there. I don't know if we all have our one-on-ones planned before that or not, but I think that that would be something that would be, at least with me, it'd be advantageous to make sure that we're prepared with the answers that we may get asked. I want to be able to go up there and not look like a... I want to be able to answer a question if it was posed to me by the constituents that are up there because they don't have a commissioner that represents them, really. I mean, Mindy is as close as you can get, but they don't have a vote for us. But they are our customers, and so I think it's really important that we hear them and be prepared to address their issues.
Yeah, I think one of the couple of topics we're going to hear about is Lieberg issue. You know, one way or the other about, you know, when you come by, oh, I think we're going to hear about that, we're going to hear about bill estimating. And we've already had a backgrounder on estimating reads and stuff, and we've got a really good explanation for that. But, yeah, I think, because I think I'm going to be moderating and meeting, and so maybe, you know, the last stance, who knows? But it's usually not a raucous group. The only time we've had issues with Upriver was when we did the vote. And it got pretty vocal because of Mindy thing. But I think if we just hear people out and understand them, and if they've got a gripe, let them gripe. And they want to compliment, I mean, we've talked before, we had Matt Michael up there with Lane Electric. And we talked, you guys want to switch to Lane Electric? Because they're surround the whole thing up there, and we've had that discussion. I'm not, you know, I don't think it's appropriate to bring it up, you know, say electricity some other place. But, yeah, I think we're going to hear some local critics. I've got some pretty terse emails about the bill reading and things. And that's okay. That's why we signed up for this job.
President Brown, I'll work with staff to get information to the board on any topics we think will be relevant and questions that we think will be asked.
And we'll have a signal from the back of the room, just in case. No, don't say that.
Well, and I would hope that we would have our partners up there that are our staff and hopefully some of our partners up there that have been working really hard in the recovery process because I know that a lot of people up there are really appreciative of what we're doing. So if we have that as a counterbalance, you know, it's like, yeah, you missed the estimation of my bill, but, you know, same in the river.
I know we will have staff. I'll follow up and see which partners we've invited. I know, for example, I've invited the Lane Electric general manager. I believe Commissioner Schlossberg was going to reach out to a couple of their appropriate board members, but other partners who are doing work up there. I'll follow up with staff.
Yeah, the Watership Council, maybe. Those people, I think, are good. Mindy? Sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. Kind of along those lines, this is really part of correspondence. But in the information about the process for Lieberg, one very, very small thing that I noticed is there's a kind of a timeline or listing of upcoming things, and it lists the work session that we're having on Lieberg in June. And I believe the date is incorrect because we changed the date of that work session. And so I think that it's an earlier date. So either I'm wrong or it still has the old date. But just to check up on that to make sure that the information that we're sending out is correct because that will be really important. And then the last thing is the email from you, Frank, last week, I think, announcing that we have a new climate policy advisor. And just, it'd be nice, maybe in the future, future meeting with that person because so much of what we do revolve around climate stuff. And it'd be nice to say hi and welcome that person.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Schlossberg. Kelly Hale, who presently works at Lane Transit District, has informed them of this decision. So I'm not letting anything out of the bag prematurely, but she has agreed to join E-Web as a climate policy analyst and advisor, specifically reporting into me as the general manager. And she will begin on May 2nd, I believe. And so I will plan to introduce her to the board on May 3rd, which is, I believe, the next day.
Great, and I look forward to seeing all of you in person at our Upriver meeting.
All right, well, Mindy, thank you for continuing to participate. I know it's not easy when you're down and out, so thank you. I really appreciate that. So with that and nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.